Steven Mitchell, 104 Prospect Avenue. I've got a couple of questions. My first question is, where is the mayor and the council people?
To have the mayor and council people here would be a public meeting of the mayor and council. And therefore, they have to do the Sunshine Statement and open up a full council meeting. It was felt that this is for the public to give their testimony or their input. And then we would share this with the mayor and council at the next meeting. And we would submit the transcript to DEP and hopefully meet with the DEP. Nothing's going to be, there's not going to be any action taken between this hearing and without a public meeting of the mayor and council. There will be an action taken by the mayor and council at a public meeting at some further point when we have additional information to give them. But there's not going to be any automatic action taken by the council without benefit of input from the DEP and a public hearing where people can get up and speak about either a resolution or ordinance or whatever DEP wants.
I was just asking the question because it's the week between Christmas and New Year's and all these people came out on a night when they could have been doing a lot of other things and the mayor and council aren't here to hear it. So I was just curious as to why.
Well, that's not necessarily correct. There are some council people present, but they weren't required to be here because it was not a meeting of the council.
My second question is, I looked through your, the application, the documents that you had online that were submitted to the DEP. And there was a lot of information and documentation as to why you think that these lots should be taken off the Rossi. But as the question was asked earlier, who put these properties onto the Rossi initially? There was no documentation of that. You yourself said it wasn't official resolution or anything like that. It was done administratively. Where is the documentation of the administrative acts that put them on the Rossi?
I have it. I have all that documentation.
Will that be available for public view?
If there was any resolution or ordinances that authorized the Rossi, we would have had it online. There are documents that submitted, that were submitted to DEP, signed by officials of the borough, but they were before my time. So I can't speak to that. I looked for official actions of the borough. I didn't find other governing body. That was standing, I don't know if it requires a resolution or not. I just made the statement that there were no resolutions or ordinances-
I understand.
-that authorized it. As opposed to the ordinance that was adopted, which is a law of the town, which was adopted for the purchase of the properties. That's the, that's the problem. That's the question.
I guess my last question before the coming period would be, would the properties, if they're taken off of the Rossi, would, could they be deed restricted to be held by, you know, in public trust or never to be sold again? Could that be a deed restriction placed on the properties?
I don't see, I mean, the council could vote to modify the deed of any property it owns, but I think you'd have to have a public hearing to do that. So, it's speculation. Our management could do anything they want. They could do anything that they feel like to do if they focus on the best interest of the town.
And my last question is, you noted earlier that you specifically didn't call these properties parks or you didn't put park on the sign or anything. Why, why is that?
We had a letter in, a report in '96. This property had been on the radar of the borough as far back as 1980 as a possible boat launch grant. In fact, it was a plan prepared years ago by the administration of Michael Arno for a quite extensive public parking and boat launch area, including taking of properties, extending over to the library property and putting parking behind the library. That was never perfected and that was done long before the borough owned the properties. In fact, I think the records will show that these properties appeared on the Rossi at points before the borough owned the properties. I don't have all those dates off the top of my head. But, I'm sorry, the question, remind me of your question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, why didn't you ever want to call it park?
So, let's back to the question ahead. We were told as a result of inquiries about redoing this boat launch at the Fuller Maple, Maple Avenue, whether or not, we started running numbers again to see if it would make sense. And we found from DEP that they would not approve any new boat launch facilities. There is restriction due to the clam, the oyster beds or clam shells or wherever, that they would not approve any new permits for boat launch facilities. So the borough abandoned any boat launch. We were told that it would require permits, but no permits were to be had. So, that property, according to aerial maps and photos that I showed a couple of years ago at a public hearing as to why we were paving the parking lot, it was a footpath from the roadway to the water. You had to go through the jungle of, of wherever, I think the better name, the place that I could.
This was what we did.
Excuse me, let me answer the question. I understand. There was, there was just a footpath where you had to go through the jungle to get to the water. And to just summarize this, volunteers went down, we used to have Clean Ocean Action come in, we used to have prisoners come in and clean up the waterfront and remove the flotsam back in the storm of '92 or '96, whatever it may all the folks piled up there. It was a big collection. Long story short, some volunteers took it upon themselves to improve that access. And we were fearful that we would be held accountable for violations of DEP rules to allow improvements to the property without DEP permits. So therefore, we were hesitant to do anything that would be condoning of reconstructing or altering that property in a way that was in violation of the DEP rules with regard to permits. And that was the main reason.
I'm pretty familiar with the DEP rules for general permits for wetlands and stuff, and there's nothing in there that says you have to, you know, you have to get a GP 24 to call a piece of property a park. Why didn't you call it a park? That doesn't answer my question.
Well, real simple, the borough hadn't, didn't want to call it a park.
Why not? That's what I'm asking you.
Because a park constitutes telling the public to go there.
Who wants to go to the park?
But the point is, at that time, it was, it was not improved. It was just vacant land.
It was pure as a, it was a pool lot.
But there's insurance reasons. There's a lot of obligations in the borough that you don't necessarily come across in the day to day that we do.
Explain it to me.
Well, insurance and liability and policing and lighting and parking. So there are a lot of things that go with a park. And the borough was not, at that time, we were working on other projects and we had not budgeted committing any funds towards that property. Just preparing application to the DEP and acquiring permits in the meetings takes time. And we were looking at the, changing the landfill into a park and restoring that property. We were looking at improving down Basie Park. We had improvements to the bulkhead and the waterfront protection grant for Marine Park. We had a lot of other projects going on. So it wasn't a priority. We had other things that were more important to the borough at the time. And that's why.
Thank you.
Yes. You, yes?
Hi, Tom Hammond, 47 River West.
You can use the chair.
Couple of questions. One is, has there been any-
You said, okay.
What, has there been any thought given to issuing stickers to restrict parking in these places? We have to, to park on the streets of Red Bank, we get stickers. We simply go down and show identification and get a sticker. What, why not a plan that allows kayakers, library goes to get stickers and use that as a way of restricting parking in there? Seems like a reasonable thing. I know, I, well, I live on my street, there are a number of people who park there without stickers and the town certainly doesn't find them every year, so I don't see that enforcement for every day. I don't see where that's really an issue. Stickers would be, seems to be quite a good way of restricting parking in those situations. You have a kayak, you have a kayak permit program to the trailers down there, you get it to the library, you show your, you show your identification, you're a Red Bank user and you, you get a library sticker.
So the answer, the answer is, we couldn't do that. We could not give stickers to the library if people use that parking because it has to be restricted for kayakers. That's the problem. That is, that in a nutshell is the reason we're here.
My second question is, what was the cost involved in paving the parking lot, I guess the lot one, and installing the deans there? What's the annual revenue from parking there and what's the payback we're considering?
I don't have, I don't have those revenue numbers here. Actually, I don't have that, the cost. I do, the parking lot improvement was funded in part, in large part by a contribution by the KFAN union, which was part of their development agreement when they built their building. The parking lot was in poor condition. They asked if they could put their job trailer on the lot and in return, they would make a contribution to the paving, which was $17,000. And that was part of the developers' agreement and which was approved at a public meeting by resolution.
As a user, I have to say, I was really surprised when that went up because it sizably decreased in that number of parking spots there. And I was really kind of dismayed when I saw that improvement go up there. But the thought crossed my mind, you know, does the paving, sometimes that costs 20, 25,000 dollars? Is the revenue that's generated by something like that more than 1,000, 1,500 dollars a year? And considering the amount of money, I would think that the payback on that would be 20 some, 20 some ideas. So I thought that was, I was surprised by that. The other thing, with regard to liability down there, there are so many places in Rumsen, in Locust Park, Point, in Deal where you can watch. And I, they just don't have those kinds of liability, liability issues that you've listed. And they just don't understand, you know, why they're making a statement like that. I was down in a place in Deal this morning. They put a sign up, you know, no liability, knock yourself out. These are really wealthy communities, Elbra, Deal, okay? Allanhurst, right, right in the beach club, Monmouth Beach, walk up and, walk up and do your thing.
Monmouth Beach also had people, a boat launch that drowned at that boat launch. We've had people drive through down Maple Avenue. So there are, there are concerns. When you add it to a park, there is a change in the insurance requirements there. Next question. Let's try, let's try the size of our word. In the back, in the Green Culture classes, yes?
Hi, Arlene Toma.
Arlene, can you come up, please?
I'm just, I'm wondering if-
Sorry.
Arlene Toma.
And your address was?
69 Meadow Drive. That's in Shrewsbury. I'm just wondering if the lot goes public and it's used for parking by Hupmanians employees across the street, how does one go kayaking there anymore? How do I park? Where do I park? There is no parking on the street. There's signs all over that says there's no parking. Where do I park in order to go kayaking, in order to go ice skating, in order to bring a one man I spoke down there? And actually, it just, it's conservation and recreation is what this statement is for how that land is to be used. So I don't have to access the water. I need to be conservation or any type of recreation.
Well, the question is-
How do I access?
Where do you park now? I mean, there's no change. What we're asking is that there be no change in the parking as it is.
What has happened is the borough has received several notices from the DEP saying that we have to police the parking lot and not allow people to go anywhere else other than to the river. So what we're doing is keeping it public. That's what the intent of this, intent of this is-
What stops, what stops one specific company from using it 100%?
What stops them from using it now? They could be using it now. There's nothing stopping them from using it now. So nothing should change.
What changes is, in this weather, nobody can park there unless you're going out on the water. And that's an honest saying for a property that was purchased to provide public parking. We can have an event at the library. We have people visiting the library. If this restriction holds true, they can't go there. They can't park.
Daniel Jones, Peter's Place. Hopefully, this can be answered simply. So is the path to Maple Cove where currently we're able to launch kayaks and other boats, is that at stake?
No.
Can you elaborate? Like, there's, what is, I don't understand exactly what is at stake according to those maps.
What's at stake is, a list in Trenton will be changed where these property, a property will be deleted and we won't have a restriction on the parking. That's it. There's no other proposed change.
And it can be sold and developed.
Yeah, but after resolutions and ordinances and everything else. It is not the intent, I'll say it again, it is not the intent of the borough to sell these properties.
So it's not the intent, but it does make it possible to sell?
Listen, if we wanted to sell those properties, we could sell them now. We could go and find another piece of property and make it vacant and trade these properties. Have another hearing, but trade the properties. We want to sell the properties, the borough can sell the properties. But this council, actually, this is, this has changes in the council. The councils that have been involved with this property since, I guess, you know, eight, nine, 10 years, admittedly have said they are not selling those properties.
Okay, one last question. You said that a lot of the council members aren't here and you're, you're going to relay the wishes of everyone here to them? Yeah. So, I mean, given the attendance during such a hectic week, I'm asking you to speculate. Like, let's say if this were to hypothetically go to some kind of referendum, do you think that this would pass?
I can't speculate on what the council will do. But we can make the tapes available for the council that listen. We're going to send them to DEP. We'll probably meet with the DEP and after they've had a chance to listen to the transcript, I can't speculate.
Okay.
Hi, Linda Lynch from 46 Cannonwell Drive, Tintin Falls. Two questions. Are you aware, can you get the information possibly from the DEP if there are any other jurisdictions in the state that have Rossi, open spaces within their boundaries that were listed that way with the state but not by resolution? Has this happened before?
That's, that's a fruitless enterprise for me to spend time doing that. What we're concerned with now is the Rossi as it exists now and the desire to remove the restriction, which we didn't know about until we got a letter from DEP two years ago. So we were happy the way it was, you know, let anybody use it, whoever wants to use it, fine. That's what we're dealing with now. It doesn't make sense to go check, you know, the 500 and other municipalities to see if somebody had a similar situation.
I was suggesting that perhaps the DEP has a version of precedent.
There is precedent. The DEP has regulations and there's different levels of what is required for each property removal. So there's something called a diversion. If you intend to remove properties, it can be, I think, a two to one exchange of properties to take them off your open space inventory. But this particular property, these two particular properties, based on the information that was provided to Green Acres. Green Acres has determined that it is a bona fide error in being-
It has merit. That's all they said.
And I quote, it says it is a bona fide error in their February 2013 letter, it was a bona fide error in putting on the Rossi.
I think it says it has merit.
The information in our files, the Green Acres program has determined that this situation appears to meet the bona fide error standard for Rossi amendments in accordance with NJAC And agrees with the borough that the listing of entire Lot 1 and the listings of Lots 4 and 4.01 appear to be in error.
And that's before we have submitted our, our evidence. That was just-
Can we step with a question here?
Okay, that's sufficiently answered that. My second question is, and I'll piggyback on the gentleman that spoke over there about Rossi's with water access and parking in other towns. Have you looked into how, you mentioned that this is going to be a problem with policing it. I don't know if that word is actually in written policing?
It is.
Okay. I would imagine that you would mostly get some to these, to the parking lot, but there's a problem when someone calls in. Why do other towns police their Rossi parking lots?
You have to sit police there. What has happened is someone has called numerous times to the DEP saying people are going other places than to the water. And that has prompted the DEP to write numerous letters to the borough of Red Bank saying you have to remove this off your Rossi and you must take action or write or issue signs that no one can use the library parking.
And does this happen very often? Does this become a problem with manpower in the police department?
Well, it could be. I've spoken to Green Acres. They have said that they write letters based on public comment to them that there's a situation, an issue. So before, two years ago, there was no issue. There was no situation. The property was on the Rossi. The borough is fine. But somebody wrote letters to Green Acres and prompted them to write the borough, causing them to try and remove this property from their open space inventory.
Thank you.
Question.
A question. I have a question.
He was passing away.
Good evening. My name is Michael Humphries, 447 River Road, Fairleigh. Good evening. We're getting a lot of cross-examination here. I think I'd like to try and get-
My job.
Get the, indeed. I'd like to try and get down to sort of practical, practical issues. We seem to have two, two issues, two parking problem issues. One is the library, one is Maple Cove. Why can't they be considered separately? Because it seems fairly logical to me, and probably many other people, that the library parking should be for the library. So get it off the Rossi. That's one possibility. The second question of Maple Cove, I think it's, it goes to a, this reason why we're all here and why so much heat is being generated, is that it goes, people feel it's a first step. Going off the list, putting a buffer, whatever that means, I'd like to come to that in a moment, is a first step to something that nobody here wants. So it seems to me that the town could clarify, and somebody else mentioned about having a restricted deed or something that says this, because the town has said multiple times that they want public access to the water, simple public access. We have Marine Park, but it's not simple. So, but Maple Cove is simple park access. So there should be some way of satisfying the public by having some form of words that are legally binding that keep that piece of property accessible. Because here's my suspicions, if you like. And that is that we're talking about a buffer. Well, a buffer might be a bush one day and it might be a sort of three-foot fence the next day, and then five years down the road, it's a changing fence with a padlock. I just hypothesize. Because if somebody really wants to do something, then they can put a lot of obstacles in other people's way. And that's, I think, our fear. And so if we could separate the library, which has a very logical way of staying, there's a library, getting off the Rossi, and then, because there's no pump, there's no water access, realistic water access, water access from there. But there is and should be from Maple Cove. It's the only public access that's free and the whole of the Navisic, apart from going down funny little roads that aren't designed for access. You can't go into Fairleigh without paying. You can't go to Rumsen without paying. It's wonderful that you can go to Maple Cove without paying.
You're paying for it?
Yes. Well, you don't if you don't, but in theory, you're supposed to have a permit.
You're supposed to have a permit to launch a kayak.
I believe so.
I think it's $10 per, per launch.
Per launch, exactly. Which is, anyway, so going to get back to practicalities. How can we, how can the town spell out what the buffer is going to be so that everyone here knows it's not going to encroach vastly onto the green space that's grassed and so on? And secondly, how can it be determined that the property will remain accessible to the public for the use, get boats in and out of? And this buffer doesn't become an excessive barrier?
Well, I think you could, it has been suggested about easement, the easement. And I think that's probably the way to go because we have had for years, and actually it started back in 1931 Master Plan. We have had for years a waterfront access plan. In fact, I don't have it with me. But I believe you have a map that shows the waterfront access plan. And as developers or property owners improve their properties, we require them to either give us the easement or actually, in some cases, they've done the improvement. And this goes, yes. And this goes back to early days in my career when the Molly Pitcher and the Oyster Point and Coastal Office Building were developing. There are easements across the waterfront, but you can't build them. Molly Pitcher is, was kind of tough because the motel part at the rear was already constructed. But there's a 10-foot sidewalk there. And there's a fence between the sidewalk and the pool area. That fence is because that sidewalk is public. And the intent is for us to connect Marine Park all the way around as far as we can go, to provide public access. And part of the intent is when properties are developed between thoroughfares, then the borough can take those properties and do the improvements. I know that Bluffs has somewhat of a public access. Hupmanian's waterfront is improved, the sidewalk, it was really as part of their access. And the plan is to include that access or continue that access at least over to Virgesside Gardens Park and to Marine Park. So I'm sure that could be incorporated into the deeds of the properties, perhaps an easement. And because that's still on Maple Avenue, perhaps we could expand that easement a little bit to ensure that access to those easements are accessible from Maple Avenue. I'm sure that's something the council would like to consider.
I think that might take a feather of heat out of the problem. Thank you.
Again, it was never the intent not to provide the access. The intent is to remove the restriction on the parking. Trying to get people that haven't had a chance yet. Yes?
I do have a statement, but I have a couple of questions.
Can we, can we just do a statements, the questions first?
Absolutely.
And then, anybody ask questions and then we can do states.
My name's Mike Harmon, 33, Bonnie Bray Path, Atlantic Highlands, New Jersey. Say that again. Mike Harmon, 33, Bonnie Bray Path, Atlantic Highlands, New Jersey. I am a Monmouth County Park Commissioner for about 25 years and I've been a mayor and a councilman for 16 years, retired. a councilman for 16 years, retired. My question for T and M is a couple. This scenario that you've laid out of the subdivision, aren't there other jurisdictions that T and M does work for, like Atlantic Highlands, where other-